The school board meeting for Tuesday, September the 3rd, 2019 is officially called to order at 3:30 PM. The pledge of allegiance will be led by our attorney, Mr. Charlie Douglas. And then we have prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, God, we come today, God, with some uncertainties and anxieties, God, but we know that you are in control. God, we thank you for the leadership that had the wisdom and the foresight, God, to take care of shelters and make arrangements for people that might possibly be in harm's way. And now, God, we ask your divine guidance in this meeting, that you would help us, oh, God, to handle the affairs of this district. God, that our hearts and our minds, God, would be focused on what is before us, that we may make the best decision possible. God, we pray your blessings upon our district, and not just our district, God, but all of the districts that stand in the way of Dorian as it makes its move. And, God, we pray for those people in the Bahamas. Father, just keep us is our prayer, and keep us at perfect peace, that our minds and hearts are stayed on you. We ask all of this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Hey, at this time, we will go with our presentations. Are we having any? There is a possibility that some may have to be rescheduled, but we'll go ahead. The first presentation is of a $50,000 check from Georgia Pacific for the advanced manufacturing program. Mr. Mike Griffith, Vice President, Manufacturing and General Manager of Georgia Pacific Palatka Operations.
Madam Chair, if I may, I've talked to them today, and they have sent the check, but they've asked if they could come-
Is it in the mail?
Uh, it's actually, it's actually in our hands.
Oh, praise God. Look at that.
I did talk to them. Mr. Griffith had to be out of town unexpectedly due to the storm, so they've asked if they can come back and actually-
Yes.
-present that, and I said absolutely.
Yes, most definitely. Thank you. Next will be Feed the Need, Mrs. Denise Bramlett and Mrs. Renee Huff.
And I believe we've rescheduled that.
Okay.
And-
And the state livestock judging team.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that's fine.
Yeah, thank you for asking.
All right. Just making me a note. Okay, do we have any public comments? Did anyone get a card? Okay. All right. At this time, we're ready for our consent agenda for the school board. We will start with Mrs. Pickens.
Um, I had my questions re-answered, so I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Buckles.
I'm fine.
Okay. Mr. McInnis?
I just had F.5.
Hold on.
Just had a question. I didn't get an answer.
Okay. This is F.5. That would be Miss Bowden, I think. Okay, F.5. Uh, Mrs., all right, Mrs. Crawford has none. Okay, and I don't have any mine. We're taking care of, all right? Do we get a motion?
I just had a reminder. I'll recuse myself from G.3.
Oh, yes. Why don't we, we go ahead and do that now? At this time, we will hear from our attorney regarding-
I was just, as a reminder, that I had to recuse myself from G.3.
Yes, but we just want it to be heard, that you are, you know, making sure that you are not a part of it for something that may come up later. All right?
Good idea, Mr. Attorney.
Do we now get a motion?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda minus F.5.
I'll second that. All right, it's been moved by Mr. Buckles that we accept our consent agenda with the exception of F.5, and it was seconded by Mrs. Jane Crawford. All in favor, let it be known by the word aye. Aye. Opposes, hear and none. Motion carries 5-0. All right? Mrs. Crawford, F.5. No, you didn't pull it, I'm sorry.
Bud, I think.
Bud, Mr. McInnis, sorry.
Hey, Ms. Gilliard.
Hey, what's up?
I just had a question. I read where we made the offer and what the seller was offering, so what happens in that? I just, I was trying to use a pass baric.
Well, all we can offer is, yeah, fair market value. Right.
And what's it appraised at?
$3,180.
$3,100 or something. It's a very small piece of property that bucks right up to our fence that we really need.
Yeah.
And who owns that?
Eminent domain.
Smith.
So what's the process? You know, what is the process, basically, I guess, is what I wanted to know.
We're gonna offer them fair market value. If they don't take that, then we can do the eminent domain.
Eminent domain. I had, we've done that in the past a few times, and, you know, you sound like you don't, you don't want to be big government, but there are times when you have some of those properties that I encountered when purchasing those over the years at estates. You had too many people in it, nobody could settle on what-
I mean, this isn't even big enough to put a house on.
Yeah.
It's very small.
Yeah. That's all I had.
Out of curiosity, out of curiosity, John, the Brexlon and the Beck Automotive Group owns that little sliver there.
They were gonna donate-
They were gonna donate it.
I think they still are.
They still-
We're just trying to-
Just kind of come up with a price of-
And there's one more piece we need to try to purchase also, but we're trying to get this one right now first, and then we'll work on the other ones.
All righty.
Okay. All right. If you make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve item F.5.
I second.
All right, it was moved by Mr. Bud McInnis that we now approve item F.5, and it was seconded by Mrs. Harley Pickens. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposes, hear and none. Motion carries 5-0. Okay? That was the consent agenda. We are now in emergency session. The 2019-20-20 personnel allocation change number 6.16 through 6.20. Justification, explanation, time sensitive.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the K.1 under the emergency session of the personnel allocation change for 2019-20, change number 6.16, 6.20. Justification, explanation, time sensitive.
I'll second.
Go ahead. Go ahead. All right. It was motion by Mr. David Buckles that we accept the emergency item K.1, and seconded by Mrs. Jane Crawford. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposes, hear and none. Motion carries 5-0. Now, out of emergency session, we have no unfinished business. Our new business for discussion is discussion and input, school improvement plan requirements, and timeline.
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask Jonathan Hanky, your Director of School Improvement, to come up and present to you, please.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Hanky.
I have one of these for each of you.
I'm sorry.
So there are a few things in your packet that you can review later in preparation for the September 17th meeting, but there are a few things that I definitely want to bring to your attention today, so that as we move forward into the month, you're ready for that. If you'll take a look at the first document in there, I just want to make sure everyone's aware, when we look at the different categories and classifications, they, there are many, and they can be somewhat confusing. So if you're looking at that document, the CSNI schools in our district are Mellon and Jenkins because of their first-time D. school grade. You will also see Putnam Virtual Franchise come up. They are a C. school, but their graduation rate was 58, which is below that 67% threshold, and so you will still see them referenced and listed because of that. So they fall underneath that CSNI category. Underneath, if you're looking at the non-charter school classifications, underneath TSNI, all of our schools are falling underneath that category except for Mosley and QI because of the subgroup data.
So, excuse me, did you say?
All of them except for Mosley and QI. Now, when it comes to school improvement plans, all of our schools have to do one because they're Title I. And so we use the school-wide improvement plan to also satisfy the Title I, so they don't have to do two plans. But if you have a subgroup below 41% underneath ESA and the federal index, you would also have to do one. When we look at charter schools, Putnam Edge is an F. school grade, so they fall underneath And then your Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences falls underneath the TSNI because they have a subgroup below 41%. If you take a look at the next document, there's a timeline there where I have tried to put down everything related to school improvement for you, so I just want to go through that and note a couple of things. Underneath August, all of that has been completed. Edge did submit their school improvement plan to us. There is a letter in your packet that you can review later that was sent to Edge.
Okay, so it says they have a 30-day notification to appear before the school board.
Yes, and that is the letter in your packet in the very end.
Letter is suffice.
That is the, yes, that is their 30-day notification via letter.
Gotcha.
And so that is included for you to read.
Yes, sir.
As we look at September, so we just submitted our draft school-wide plans for Mellon and Jenkins and Putnam Virtual. Theirs have to be reviewed by the Red, so those were submitted here just a few days ago. The Red is the Regional Executive Director underneath Differentiated Accountability, and he will provide feedback by September 30th on those three plans. As we look at September, a few things. This Friday, we have to submit our instructional verification rosters. These do a couple of different things. For Mellon and Jenkins and Edge, teachers are eligible if they have a state VAM that is effective or highly effective. Teachers in those schools are eligible for up to $7,500 if they have an effective state VAM, or $15,000 if they have a highly effective state VAM. That is then allocated based on those instructional rosters, and we have been working to get those in on time. Edge is also part of that, and we have been working with them. We already have their list, and so I'm working with Renee Lamro, Director of Assessment Accountability, to make sure that the rosters for those three schools are correct, and we'll submit that this Friday. The other thing those rosters do for Jenkins and for Mellon is that we have to meet district averages for the percents of teachers that have a state VAM on that campus, to make sure that there are not, and there is not a high percentage of teachers that are unsatisfactory or have needs improvement on that camp, on those two campuses. It starts to get a little confusing because there are two separate state board rules that govern, and so Edge is eligible for certain things, but then there are certain things that they do not fall underneath, because there are two separate rules, one for traditional public schools and one for charter schools. And we're going to go into that rule just briefly in a few minutes, because as we prepare for the 17th, as you're looking at that timeline, the 17th, Putnam Edge is going to present their school-wide improvement plan to you. That'll be a presentation, a discussion, and an action, so that'll be actioned by the board on the 17th.
Let me ask you a question, Jonathan, while we're right there. If, let's just say the board said, "We're, we're not satisfied with the progress we've seen, we're gonna, we've decided to cancel your charter." The state kicks in, and they come to the aid of a charter school, and there's all kind of hoops that you would have to go through to even think about doing that. Is that correct?
We would follow state board rule, and there are certain things, and I'm going to go over that rule-
Okay.
-in just a minute.
I got it.
And then that would be within your right as a school board, because you are the sponsor. But we're going to get into a couple of those things in just a minute. The other thing I want to point out, October 4th is an instructional review. Again, this is part of differentiated accountability, and so only Mellon and Jenkins are part of that. And then the last thing I just want to note before we go into the charter school state board rule is that the traditional public schools are governed by a separate rule. If you want to note that, that is 6A-1.099811. And that's the rule that, for example, mandates an instructional review for certain schools and some of the other monitoring pieces that we have to do as a district. In the essence of time, I'm going to jump to the next document. I have gone through and already highlighted this state board rule, so that is very clear what pertains to you as a school board and what does not. It is important to note that you are the sponsor, so when they reference sponsor, the school board is the sponsor for Putnam Edge and all charter schools. Edge does have to do a charter school because of Part A. They received an F. school grade. If you look at number 2, notifications, that's the next highlighted group there. The letter is included in your packet, and that was submitted on time and included the different things noted in the state board rule. Appearances, the next section, number 3, that's in the middle of the page, that's where Edge will be here on the 17th to present their school-wide plan for you to have an opportunity to review it, to have discussion and input on their plan. Section-
Have you seen that before, or just-
You will. It'll be published when we publish the seven-day. Yep, you'll see that, so it'll be available to you to review.
Looking at 4A, it kind of answers my question there a while ago.
Yes, and then there are a few more pieces that we're going to get to as well that'll answer your question. When you look at four school improvement plans, I will note that Edge did choose to use the SIMS template. That's the same template that all of our other schools use, and so that does kind of help get them making sure that they're meeting, or at least addressing, all of the items that are noted below there. So 1, 2, 3, 4, all the way through 9, those are all sections in that plan, and so you'll see those sections when you get a chance to review their plan. If you skip ahead to the next page, number 5, approvals. This is up for the 17th board meeting of this month. You will have the opportunity to approve or deny their plan. Based on your approval or denial, we will notify them in writing what your decision is. You do have the option to approve a plan with certain conditions in place. That is something the board could decide at that time. And if there are some other noted items in the board rule that might kick in if you chose to deny their school improvement plan. They are not, underneath section 6 there is skipped, that is not part of where they're at based on their school grade history, so that section is not highlighted. Number 7 is really important, so monitoring. Sponsors shall monitor the implementation of school improvement plans. That is all it says, and so the monitoring is completely up to you. It is not clearly defined, as it is in state board rule for traditional public schools, and so that is something for you to be considering as a board at the 17th meeting. And when you look at Part B, "We have not communicated your expectations for monitoring or for coming back and checking in with you as the sponsor," so that is something that you can decide on the 17th meeting as well, because you can request that they come back and provide progress monitoring and updates to their school-wide progress throughout the year.
I was going to say periodically, so you can-
And somebody will give us a recommendation as to how they'd be monitored?
So we can certainly, if you have questions about that, we can, we are available to answer your questions between now and the 17th, so that's something, something you can certainly ask for individually.
Well, I would hope the superintendent would have a recommendation.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, would we do it the same way? We monitor our teach, our schools, or?
You could choose some of those same things.
Or will you have to be ready?
We'll have review.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and we'll review the plan and provide some guidance for you as well.
So based on this document, we do have the right to sort of, for lack of a better term, push in to help, to see, to make sure, to-
Absolutely. It's just very undefined, so when we think about providing what your expectations are as the sponsor to Edge, we will do that in writing based on the 17th meeting and your discussion and input. So we could certainly look to what traditional schools have to do when they're an F. or a D. We can make sure that you're aware of that. You could choose some of those same things as a board. You could approve it with those sorts of monitoring conditions, and that would be something you could decide.
Okay, that can come up later. I was thinking ahead.
And I'm always available if you have questions about different things or different options, but because it is undefined, you as a sponsor have the opportunity to define what sort of monitoring you want in place if you approve the plan. So the rest of it is for you to review, and if you don't have any further questions, we will move on.
I'm good.
So if we approve-
You said you did-
I'm good.
With certain conditions-
Yes.
Then would they come back to us?
Again, that is all something we can, you can, as a sponsor, we can put in writing for you and request. So you can have them physically come and present certain things. We can look to other ways to monitor progress in the school.
And, and we said it was their, their graduation rate, that was well below?
No, Edge is actually an F. school grade. It is not just their graduation rate, it is a number of their-
Right, F., so there's several.
There are a number of, yes, when you look at their school grade.
Yes, sir.
Achievement, gains, graduation rate, all of those things were below.
Jonathan, do they, prior to the 17th, if they wanted to maybe provide you some input or provide us some input, could, could they set up a time they can come in and meet with us?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to meet.
Yeah, or just individually, or, or, you know, whatever you deem appropriate, but we want to give you an option to come in. If you want to sit down with our staff and just provide your input, then we can definitely arrange that.
Because-
Your input as far as monitoring and that type of thing, that sounds like-
I mean, I wouldn't be able to do that until somebody had presented those ideas.
For me, I feel comfortable knowing that the instructional team is on top of this. I'm, I'm going to wait for directions before I try to be a hands-on in this.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm too ignorant of it to-
We just want to give you an opportunity if you do want to come in and discuss it.
Offer any, well, suggestions.
For one thing that we could possibly look at, is that Friday, you know, attendance, using Friday as an instructional day as opposed to, I mean, and we can make those recommendations. That would be one of the things, if I were a part of it, that I might suggest that we, we look at as opposed to Monday through Thursday, we look at the five days.
What are you, what are you talking about?
They, their students only attend school-
Tuesday through Friday?
No, Monday through Fri, through Thursday. I think it's Friday they're off.
Oh, they changed it? It used to be off Monday.
They're off Monday? Okay, well, what, however it works, yes, that.
Oh, okay, I see.
But anyway, we could, we, we could certainly share that with the management team as you all meet and look at it, and then, like Mr. Buckles said, surely, come back and advise us and give us some, some direction.
But we welcome your input, and, you know, and we'll definitely make a recommendation.
Definitely, that's one that I would, I would like to see addressed, possibly.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see, you know, there's certification of all their teachers.
So those are things that you could, if they're not presented in their school-wide plan, those are certainly things you could request on the 17th.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right.
I'm good.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Now, there's no action that's needed. It's just for information.
Just presentation.
Okay? All righty. Oh, yeah. At this time, we will have our reports from the school board, from the attorney, and from our superintendent. Mrs. Pickens, I think we started with you last time, so we'll start with Mrs. Crawford. I'm trying to keep it in my head.
First thing I'd like to do is thank everyone who was involved in the dedication ceremony of the WM Bill Thomas Workforce Center. It, it was perfect.
It was beautiful.
Everything except the heat, and we didn't have any control over that. I just appreciate it so much. It was such a wonderful honor. I'd like to, you know, thank all of the staff that are involved in helping listen to the weather at EOC and the shelters and, you know, any, I know John and everybody's on standby, and it's, it's a busy time. I'm hoping that it'll get here and go away.
It's crawling.
I was, I'm, I'm very honored to be a part of the Baby Brain Builders Group, and we had a debut where we debuted the book, The ABCs of Putnam County, Always Wanted to Be Published, and now I am.
Off your bucket list.
Yeah, there you go. But I saw where Charlie had read it to his children, and it's a great thing to be involved in, and, you know, the more that we can push reading and help young parents how to read with their children and have conversation with them from the earliest ages, the better off we'll be as a school system. And then I have one question. Did we have to, after our first, have, we've had, have we had our first FTE? No, we haven't. So we don't know if we're going to have to move any teachers or let any go?
We've done all of that.
Okay, we have?
After the 10-day count.
Okay, after the 10-day count. How many were involved?
I think you approved the allocations to date, not the emergency ones, if I'm not mistaken.
I mean, were there a bunch that had to be moved?
No.
Do we have to let anybody go?
No.
Okay, good.
And it's, it's actually helped with our vacancies, so we are, we are less than 80 vacancies in the district.
Perfect. Oh, great.
That's great.
Yes. That's all I have. Because Jane was going to go back.
No, Jane wasn't.
Like, ninth grade, ninth grade ELA.
And, and 11th grade ELA.
I'm never grading another writing paper, as long as I live.
Read your lips.
Never say never.
I would go back and-
You've already done that in a few contests. You've already done it in a few local contests.
Okay. Mr. McInnis? Thank you, Mrs. Crawford.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Had the pleasure to do one more 20-plus-year service recognition with maintenance and enjoyed the dedication of Jane's father. I was, I've, I was always impressed with your dad. He was, I was scared of him.
Why? A gentless man.
Period. Right?
Yeah. Had the opportunity to attend the value adjustment reorganization meeting. I filled in for Ms. Gilliard, and we're on board with that, and had the pleasure of attending a huge career fair. Kudos to set that up. It was so many booths, so many vendors, so many people, and past and present and future. It was great. It was great. Big win for Interlochen Rams. They beat Umatilla. I don't know what's going to happen this weekend, though, with the games. What do you think?
The team with the most points at the end of the game will win.
That's undecided right now. I know they've got some, some plans, but it's kind of tough to play when having a practice and all, but I think we'll be hearing more about what their plans are. I know PHS is talking about maybe doing a Saturday game, but that's still undecided.
And that kicker from Interlochen, that's the one that Dad sent him to that summer camp. That kid is good. Yeah.
And I'll echo what Ms. Crawford said about the shelters. Haven't worked a shelter before. It's like it's not, I mean, kind of the, because we have so many people in the system for 20 or more years, it's not their first rodeo, so they know what to do, and it's very comforting, I think, for people in the community to go and have a place to go and just feel welcomed and-
Like it's the day's end.
Only Brown and Pierce can do that. Man, oh, man.
Especially with the pets as well, and, I don't know, I just, I know our community just has a heart for the needs of others, and it just is more expressed all the time when others have concerns or disasters, and, I mean, we're right there, so.
Yes.
That's it.
We are a small town.
Yes.
Mayberry and Mount Pilate. Gober, Gomer. Mr. Buckles.
She got any more?
Oh, his camera. Every town has one.
He's locked up.
Thank you, Mr. McInnis. Thank you, Mr. McInnes. I think it's the hurricane that affects it, you know, we're giggly and kind of, you know.
I'm real giggly, yeah.
Yeah, you've been downing trees.
I've been, I've been getting ready, but is it my turn?
Yes, sir.
Hey, kudos to everybody in the shelters, everybody. I hate it for principals, all you guys that were principals, Rick and Sandy and I, and teachers have gone to bed in those shelters at night and not knowing if your family's safe. It's a, it's a hard deal, and my hat goes off to all the volunteers and pray to God we're safe in Putnam County and have no accidents on the road or anything like that, and hope we don't have to close bridges and things. But having said that, you know, the, the next step will be, when do we shut them down? And of course, that's directed by the governor and the state to lift, and then you have the people that don't want to go home because they like, like Ms. Crawford said, it's like the Holiday Inn Express. Anyway, I enjoyed seeing the dedication to Mr. Thomas without a doubt. It's one of the nicest ceremonies I've seen because I knew him so well, and, and I was never scared of him. He was a guy that I, I just loved to see because we could talk hunting and things like that, and, and James' brother Scott was always causing him grief, but what boy doesn't cause her father grief? But that was truly wonderful, and to visit former superintendents and to go through with Carrie Farrell, the history of Mr. Thomas, when he consolidated the small community schools and put them in the bigger schools and bust the kids, you know, that was a, that was enough to make anybody want to give up the job. And then Carrie Farrell took over during integration, which in Putnam County was back then a nightmare for certain. Had to be, had to be awful, you know. But beyond that, it was great. I see where there's John Eubank's sign up at the Ag Farm was circulated on the, and I hope at some point we can do a formal dedication for that, but I know it's, I received a call from a parent the other day that was concerned about someone without a handicap sticker parking in a handicapped spot at a school, and I told the wonderful lady, I said, "If you'll wait till we get through this hurricane and, and all the storms, you know, the school's got enough to handle without that, and we'll look into that. So I know you've got plenty on your plate, and you'll do that." And with that said, I'll pass it on to Holly.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles, and those comments.
I don't really have a lot. I did go to Middleton-Burney yesterday, and what really struck me was how really welcoming the, the staff was. Jamie and Lupe, they're just amazing, and they were very friendly. They also told me, I called today, and they told me that Winn Dixie had been absolutely fantastic. You guys probably don't really know Larry, the manager there, but he is amazing and so supportive of our schools, and they've been bringing snacks to them all day, and so I told her I'd probably show up tomorrow with an exercise session for them. And I just have one other thing. Thank you to Dr. Cerencey for being so available when, you know, I have questions. It's, it's amazing. He gets right, and I know that my questions are very small compared to what they were dealing with, so I really appreciate that. And then I do not want to forget that we still have federal programs and district people for the 20-plus, so we need to kind of get that scheduled if, if we can't do it all together, but we, we need to do that.
Can we do it at our next board meeting?
That's quite a few people, though.
But what we can do, well, yeah. Maybe we could do the district office at our next board meeting and go to the others.
Right.
As we did, like go to our exceptional ed department, and the other one is, is federal program.
Federal, you may have some people in Crescent City as well.
How many of their, that federal program? Oh, see, so, so we would have to go to them. It'd probably be better. So at our next board meeting, tentatively, would you schedule, we'll do the district office, the 20-plus here, then we can pick a day, go to our exceptional ed.
Or maybe even earlier, oh, no, yeah, even earlier that day and go to them.
Go, and then have them all done. Okay, I like that.
Okay, and then?
Put that down. That would be the, what, the 20th?
September 17th?
Okay. Oh, wait a minute. What else is happening in the 17th?
We got final budget.
That's after that.
And that's afterwards for New England.
Brown and Pierce Open House.
So we're going that morning. We, we can, we'll make it happen. If you'll set us up a schedule, a time, we can get there.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
All righty, just have two things real quick. Again, kudos for the handling of the shelters and opening up and keeping people abreast of what's going on. That is so important, and I love text messages as opposed to emails. Great job. And phone calls, yes. It was great at your father's ceremony, most especially seeing the camaraderie of former superintendents. That, that was, that was really touching. I thought that was great. And thinking back on the video that you put together for our district, it's, we are Putnam? All right. In case you didn't know, one of our former students from Palack High, Brianna Appelin, she graduated from Florida A&amp;M University with a degree in pharmacy. She is now the pharmacist at Azalea Health. And I just thought, when Satura came out and told me, I mean, so I went online and Googled her and saw the stuff, but it does my heart good when our young people think enough of our town to come back and serve. She's running things. I may just run over there.
A nominee for product to Putnam this coming year.
Like in Eric Hall. He has his, owns his own pharmacy.
Own pharmacy. And so those are things that we want to keep telling our children, keep telling our children, and our jobs for Florida graduate does an excellent job of helping these children to believe that they can achieve and succeed. Enough said. All right, Mr. Attorney?
Everything is going well in the legal department.
Thank you, sir. How things in St. Augustine? You're not in that area that had to evacuate. Oh, you live in Jacksonville. When did you?
Nine day.
I do live in St. John's.
That's what I thought.
Oh, I know, but it's not really St. Augustine.
His teacher knows Jane.
Okay, I thought he lived in Jordan and Green.
But you're in a safe area.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Just concerned, don't want to have to come and move you out and evacuate you. All right, Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, I was, I just want to echo the very nice ceremony. It was a pleasure for all, I appreciate the superintendents that were able to come out. It just shows unity and, you know, really honoring Mr. Thomas. I truly appreciate that and their wisdom. About the storm, I just appreciate the camaraderie and the collaboration of all of our agencies working together. Some of us have been literally living at the EOC and eating and all that, but anyway, a lot of thought is going into all the decisions that are being made, and I just want to say this in public, you know, we don't take lightly taking school off, you know, but it was, was much thought and analysis to make that decision. We were one of the last districts to make that decision.
To declare.
And, but again, we, we just want to make sure it was the right thing to do, and it's also with our staff, too. We want to make sure our staff was safe, but I think we just want to make sure our people in the best position to be safe.
Yes, sir.
And we, you know, we have ways to make up the days and that type of thing. But I did make the announcement, and I texted all of you, that we did cancel Thursday, and that was on Facebook Live, and we found that Facebook Live is a pretty good tool now to use, so we're going to be using that, but we're also emailing parents in English and Spanish to make sure they know.
Awesome.
So every way possible, we're getting the word out, but as of now, Thursday is canceled. Friday, we're going to wait and decide, maybe in the next day or two, just kind of measure and see what's going on, so we didn't want to cancel the entire week until we know for sure. Want to read a brief letter I received about one of our staff members. Very proud. Says, "Dear Superintendent Cerencey, the Board, the Board of Directors and members of the Florida Educational Negotiators are exceedingly grateful to you for supporting Thomas Bowling as he serves us in the position of secretary. The responsibilities of holding office in a statewide organization are numerous and substantial. The 2019-20 school year will be filled with demands upon the time of our FIN leaders. This continues to be unending due to the quantity and complexity of state and federal mandates, many of which are unfunded. Thomas has been an exemplary member of the FIN board and regularly shares timely information with his fellow negotiators covering a wide array of topics." So I want to congratulate Mr. Bowling for his statewide representation and represents Putnam well, so thank you, Thomas, for all your service. And I just want to thank not only Thomas, but all of our administrators, district and school administrators. Like someone said, they are leaving their families and working 12-hour shifts, and I can't say enough about their dedication to our, our people, and they, you know, they're doing this willingly. We've met with all of them in here, handed out schedules, and nobody complained. I mean, they know that's just part of the job, but they're out there protecting our kids and our, also our non-kids, our citizens, you know, so can't say enough about that. And many of the guys and ladies in this room are working tirelessly, making sure that things are up and running, so very proud of our Putnam County School District and Putnam County.
Yes.
And that's all I have. Yeah.
Thank you, Rick.
If there is nothing else to come before the board, this meeting is adjourned.